Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, April 26th, and the time is 6:33 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order. First up is our present agenda.
Help yourself.
And there's the minutes from April 12th. Any comments or anything on the minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Excellent. I'll take second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, it's Ruth and Ann Marie. And then the next one is warrant 63. Any other questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrant.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Ruth and Ann Marie. And before we adjourn to the work groups, we're gonna, since Marcus is here, we're gonna move him up in the agenda. So, Marcus.
Right. Tomorrow morning, we have the principals list breakfast meeting. What are we calling it? Let's see if we should title.
I think it's just principals. I don't know that there's food.
No food. There's cake.
Really? Cake at 9:00 AM? I like it.
Celebration.
From 9:00 to 10:00. AP testing starts next week, starting on Monday, and it goes into the week after that as well. We have a mass insights switch into summer bridge program, which is broken up over two weeks. The first one being the 1st of August to the 5th, second being eighth through the 12th. And so there's different courses offered each week, and it's all free to sign up, virtual. So in week one, they offer intro to AP bio, intro AP calc, intro AP theater science, AP study skills, AP stats, and AP environmental. And then on week two, they have AP chem, lit, math, and physics. And it's all just to see if you're going into any of those classes or want to in the future. You can take those just to see, like, some of the things you may be wearing in them or what the class would be like. And it's open to 9th through 12th graders. We have the arts night, Arts and Literacy Night, which would be the end of May, tentatively dated the 25th, but I'm sure we'll hear officially when that is, of course. We're featuring student-made art at schools, music, hands-on literacy activities, open mic for poetry or music. The Grand B public library will be there issuing library cards to anyone who wants one. And it's a great opportunity for the law community to get inside the school and see some of the kids' work and some of the other things that go on inside of school. Especially now that we haven't been able to do some of those activities on the senior course. Graduation planning is well underway. And again, we're on all the senior activities that are on the calendar that are all coming up. The prom tickets are on sale. That's May 28th. Also, the middle school luau, which should be at the Grand B Legion this year. Some different fun things that are happening inside the school, high school anyway, is that every Friday, the principal and vice-mensual parking spots have been raffled off at random. So this week, I was raffled at one along with Nate Wellman. So I'm in the principal spot, and he'll be in the vice-mensual. And this is me announcing the next week's winners, which is Brianna Sosa and Thomas Carrier. There's a scheduling committee coming up. So next year, we're gonna be running the same bell schedule, but the year after, so 2023, 2024, we'll be looking to maybe go back into the larger block schedule like we had during COVID. We're also just talking about future appreciation week next week. And in the second week of May, progress reports will be already going out, which felt like we just closed quarterly. But here we are with progress sports halfway through. This last quarter is gonna fly. The sports thing is this Sunday for all sports all year long, since it's just one big one for all of them. And overall, everything's just winding down basically, heading into the end of the year, getting ready for next year.
Any questions or anything for Marcus?
I have this flyer for the mass insight program.
Good stuff. Thank you.
I do have one question. How is the art being so that the community knows about it?
I'm not sure, honestly, just buzz, I guess. I'm sure it'll be in the news, Grand B, the newsletters, social media and such.
You mentioned the date was tentative right now, though, so I'm assuming.
Yeah, May 25th is the tentative date, probably. But just to get that.
Okay.
It is on the building's calendar for the May 25th, so it's maybe tentative. But we've saved that date.
Okay. Fingers crossed it pans out.
Right, any other questions? Matt, you are 32 on the phone. Do you want this back?
That's one keeper. I'll take it if you don't want it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go, Marcus.
Thank you, Marcus.
Thank you.
All right, so now we're going to do adjourn to the work groups. And so we have community relations and budget, and then policy. And someone pointed out to us that with community relations and budget, there's three of us there, and that presents a quorum. I mean, it is technically a quorum, but is it okay in the subcommittee? Was the question. Because we've had three people in it, but we've not made any decisions. It's just a discussion. So we weren't sure what to do with that. Because we've been doing three, we just never officially had it listed as.
Yeah, with the two.
With the two committees.
Maybe split your time in half, right? Because the third person is allowed to kind of float anyway.
Yeah.
So maybe take your time and split it in half.
Okay.
As far as.
I would like to say that I think we've done a lot with the budget, but I would like to start with community relations, if that's okay. And we'll do like 15 or so minutes with that, and then we'll do budget for about 20 minutes. Unless that's not good for you.
No, that's fine. I was just on the impression, I thought, based on the conversation we had last time, was we put them both together as we were to start discussing some materials for the town meeting.
Right, but I, so we didn't know, and we never thought about it until someone saw the names listed out, that it's a quorum thing. So I don't know how we do that. I mean, we're.
I think the intentions were really that it was community relations.
That was my understanding also.
Because it's prepping for.
Town meeting.
What you wanna put out at town meeting. So I think it's really the community relations.
Okay.
There's no decisions or votes taking place.
Right, so I think if we amend our agenda, we should say that it's the community relations work group that's doing it, which is myself and Stephanie, and then Jen, you can float. You can either do that group or go to policy, whichever.
I'll say here.
Okay, whatever.
I'll just say.
Close your vote. Is that good? Yeah?
The person floating was just listening in.
Right. And it's 6:30 to, you guys have had a lot of stuff to do.
We have two new policies to look at.
So do we wanna do 40 minutes? Or is that too long?
Probably not. It's probably not too long.
How about we regroup at 7:30? Is that fair?
Yep.
Yeah, all right. So we will resume at 7:30. Okay, welcome back, everybody. So community relations met. We talked about the flyer that we want to make for town meeting, just kind of overall what we want it to look like. It's mostly gonna be information on one side, and the second side will be like just resources, links. We're thinking maybe like a QR code that would bring people, when they scan it, to our YouTube meetings.
So Alex already made one.
So Alex already made one, so he's.
This is for their YouTube channel, where we had talked about specifically maybe getting it to like our meetings. But maybe if, I'm gonna try to say this more, so if it at least gets people to there, that's better than that.
Better than nothing.
Thank you.
And then emails, so if anyone has any questions, we're hoping that it'll be ready before the end of next week approved and everything. And we'll get it out to all the socials, print out copies, and drop them at senior center and maybe do some other places. But it'll be handed out at town meeting as well. I'm talking about posting it on like the Good News Grand B and the town meeting site and just try to really get the information out there. And this year, it won't, it shouldn't be as contentious as it was last year because we only, we only need a majority vote. We're not asking for additional money with a separate warrant. We're not gonna try to make an amendment, right? Which is gonna be straightforward, so. I say these things, it starts to happen, and I'm like, wait, is that true? Are we actually doing that the right way? So I think it'll be good, but we'll just have that information. And so Adam's gonna get a draft to us by this, the end of this week. And then we'll, we'll look it over and make comments, whatever, and then we can get it to the moderator to be approved. And then we'll print it and start handing out, posting it, what have you. Any questions or comments on that? Any questions or comments on that? And then the other thing is we just kind of had a sort of overarching community relations type discussion on is there ways that the school committee can become more active in the town? Based on, I've been thinking about it, based on that conversation that we had at one of the joint committee meetings where, you know, incoming and select board, it's not just up to them, you know, to, on ways to do that. So we're just kind of having conversations about is there any ways that the school committee, school board and the school community could be more active in trying to help with the town? So some of the things that we had talked about will help us in the school district with increasing some revenue in a smaller scope, but sort of every little bit helps. But just kind of general conversation, let that, no real headway, just trying to snowball some ideas and see if there's anything that might help. So that's what we talked about. That's all. That's great. Okay. So in the policy subcommittee, we looked at two different policies for update, AC and ACAB, and non-discrimination policy and the sexual harassment policy. Both of them, mask had provided an initial update, and then Kimberly had provided an update as well with recommended wording and changes. And so we went through and added Grand B's information and kind of read through the policies, and we'll be ready to add them to our next meeting as a potential first read for everybody. All right. Any other questions or anything on that? Not, okay, visitors' comments? Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrative assistant prior to the opening of the regular session of the school committee. The visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. For anyone who is unable to sign in ahead of time, we ask that you clearly state your name and address so that this information can be included in the records for the meeting. Do we have any attendees?
They're all staff.
All staff. Any comments from anyone on the staff? See, I don't know, they might want to say hi. We already met with Marcus. I don't see Cheryl on there. Oh, school committee meetings for 2022 and 2023. I think we can look at this, but I'd like to postpone this until after elections in May. If there's a potential for a new member, then it's, I feel like it's better to vote that in when we have the full slate.
I do.
Is anybody object to that?
I'm fine with that. I did have one request already to move something, though.
Okay.
Just the 14th to the 7th in February.
You don't want to spend Valentine's Day with us?
Well, I mean, it's not, I have no great plans, but I feel like sometimes when we have meetings, too, other people have to come.
Yeah, I was gonna ask for the same.
You know.
Okay, so we'll adjust. We'll make a note of that, and then we'll push that to.
Because there was.
The first meeting after town election, which will probably be, it'll probably be June. I think elections are like the 21st or something.
I think it's the 16th for elections.
And then they have to get sworn in, so we didn't talk about it in three weeks. So I'd say the first, first meeting in June, okay?
June 7th.
Okay. And then next is substitute reads.
We're gonna hit pause on that to move it, us for a second. I think we have some work that we wanna do in getting some props and.
Okay, next, redonation survey update.
So last time we had discussed the responses that we had received shown to the people that we hadn't heard from or committees that had multiple responses, because the intention of the letter was to get an idea of what the board felt about individuals on the board. So right now, we have no response from South Hadley. Amherst did have a full committee vote and declined at this time. Hatfield had a full committee vote, declined at this time. Belcher Town, our understanding was it's supposed to be on their agenda tonight. Ludlow is interested in the idea, but would like to know more about logistics to see if it's something, a bit about committees. It might be on their agenda for May 10th. I plan to follow up with that committee chair this week. Hadley, it was on their, it's on their equal agenda. We haven't heard anything else. And then Ware, it's on an agenda for this week. The response that we received from Ware was also an individual response. So I think we're gonna be hopefully getting some more information from those districts, but that is the update as of right now. I did speak to the Hatfield superintendent, and their response, they had talked about being open to the possibility of shared services. So, and I think Ludlow indicated some of that, too. So, you know, some very initial conversations about what that might look like, where those shared services might be. We do have one place where we have shared services already with the neighboring districts, so looking at what those options will look at. And I'll certainly report back. Then take some steps.
So I think we'll have this continue to live on the agenda until we kind of have all of the, all of the answers. So, any other comments or anything on that?
So I wanna let everyone know our plan is to submit the statement of interest for the junior senior high school. Let's do this Friday. We're just waiting on a couple final signatures. And again, this is non-binding. This committee voted on it. The select board voted on it. I think my feeling has been, and I think both of those committees supported the idea that it makes sense for us to continue to submit that statement of interest. It doesn't hold us to anything, but should something come up, it gives us an opportunity because it's months before we'll hear from MSBO. So by not submitting it now, we wouldn't be able to submit until next April, which pushes things back. And we might find out in November, December that we're not ready to move forward next year either. But that doesn't necessarily hurt us, the fact that we keep getting the pipeline. But I notify people that. Summer enrichment program, Audrey and F about last time. We do have interest in the coordinator position that we posted. There's still, final details are a bit murky, but our plan, our hope is to offer at least one option for students in K through 12 each week from July 5th to July 29th. It would likely be four days a week, and times and things like that are to be determined. Anticipate a cost somewhere in the $90, $200 range. And we anticipate needing approximately eight participants per program in order to run that. And certainly more details to come. But that's something, I think, is, like I've said here before, is a long-term wall, but hoping to get some momentum built this year. Hoping by the next time we meet, a coordinator's been named, so they're starting to identify some teachers and courses that could be operated at different levels. And it won't necessarily be K1, K12. I believe it might be a K to two option or three option, high school option. So we wanna have some flexibility with that as well. There's one other thing, if, Maya, would you mind promoting me? That I would like to just share. Our students from the Daily Dino, again, just produced a video, and I think I see, and they see this as a video that, something that they can add to in the future. But it was based really on a simple, I miss. I hope that I'm doing this right. Do I have ability to share my screen?
You're still muted.
I don't. I do. Seems to be working. So it was really built on the premise what the Grand B public schools mean to you. And a couple students in the Daily Dino started working on this. And like I said, I think they've seen it as something that can be added to over time. And this was what they put in there initially. Making all this technology work. Nope. No, I don't appear to be. Yes, that is the dream.
Is it because your volume is off on yours because you don't want the echo of all of our voices in the meeting?
Very possible.
I lived this world last year. That's great.
I think we've got it over here.
All right, so.
I wonder if they could pull it up on their computer.
Okay. Best laid plans.
Same time.
Can hear the rain. Okay, bear with me, this. I have not. I'm gonna try it right now.
Grand B schools means to me, it really means just where I learned, where like a bunch of social, social things happen, like talking to friends and maybe conversations.
To me, Grand B public schools means having freedom to teach with creativity and compassion. It also means having support from my fabulous administration and a strong sense of community with both my students and my colleagues.
We appreciate our relationship with schools because it helps us get information out and sports out to the public who appreciate what we do, and we appreciate the help from the schools in order for us to do it. What do I like about our school? I like the one-on-one relationships that we have with our teachers. Like genuinely, if you have a problem, like, most of the teachers here feel very approachable. You can go to them, so. Good teaching and confidence in a place where you can feel like your relationships with teachers and students are strong. And in my time, the thing I appreciate about Grand B public schools is that I have the space and time to make sure that those relationships are strong, and so that good teaching and learning is happening.
Ah, it's, Grand B means inclusivity, safety, fun. Ah, it's a home. The teachers have become a family. They were my family. They are my family, my colleagues now. Ah, the students are fun to be around. This place is just fun.
I'm Ava. I'm a freshman.
I'm Deanna. I'm a sophomore.
I'm Addison, and I'm a, and I'm a freshman.
Ah, I've been going to Grand B since kindergarten.
Um, I've been going here since preschool.
I've been going here since 7th grade.
I think that after the quarantine period, Grand B definitely added a lot of new classes and new opportunities for all of the students. And I really appreciate the way that they've been doing that, like after we came back to school after the whole COVID thing. I feel like there are tons of new classes and like tons of new opportunities for students that maybe wanted to do something in arts or something in music. I feel like there's just more chances for that.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, compared to what I had choices when I was in the 8th grade, like, we didn't have like a film class, or we didn't have a creative writing or a psychology class for seventh, eighth graders. And I think that really gives more of the same experience that high schools are experiencing to the seventh and eighth graders. And I think it makes them feel more like they're part of the school because they have certain classes to high school.
What does Grand B public schools mean to me? Well, the first thing that comes to mind is family. I really think of Grand B public schools as my extended family. I've been here for 25 years, and I wouldn't change a thing. Grand B public schools provides education, but it also provides a lot of community support, great friends, great quality, wonderful memories. And it's been my lifetime career, and I hope to be here for many, many years.
Grand B means to me, it's a hometown, a small town. Ah, it's that close connection. Something that I really enjoy. Wouldn't wanna be anywhere else.
So.
It did work.
You can hear the.
Yeah, I hopped out real quick to the hallway and pulled it up because I subscribed to Gcam myself. So I was able to pull it up right away and it was working.
Yeah, so that got posted early last week on the daily dyno. And I think there's things going up there routinely, but it's probably not a place that people think to look all, all the time yet. Uh, we hope at some point it does, but, um, that came across my desk and felt like another opportunity to share here, so.
So as you say that it's on the daily dyno, is that a particular website?
It is.
Is it on the school?
No, it is, there's a link to it.
They've shared it with us before.
Daily Dyno.
Daily Dyno and Granby.
G J S H S, Daily Dyno comes out, so.
Awesome.
There's articles on there, students of the month are posted on there. So, um, and I know Joe and Molly were here earlier in the year to talk a little bit about getting it up and running. Um, but these are some of the products that they've put out this year. So again, just want to continue to showcase some of the things that are happening that might not be, um, as public facing as we want them to be.
I love it. And I did, you know, we shared it before too, but I'd just like to re-bring it up and say how to find it. Anything else?
That's all I have.
I got a couple of things.
I love it.
Uh, I, in serious, John and I have been trying to a little bit multiple times to see if we can figure this out. At this point, uh, these two cameras were missing, three cameras, cameras, we actually tested a little fat on the security of those. I've been talking about it for the last six, eight months, but there's no, um, our security is, and we just need some cameras updated. We tried several times, um, to get a hold of somebody, get us some answers, um, and continue to try. So I wanted to get Joe about the security a little bit, this. We are going to, uh, Steve and I talked about today, I actually had an conversation with Chris Mark. It's already hard going to put a transfer request to FinCom for boiler costs that are above and beyond our budget this year. Yes, repairs done last two weeks ago, uh, for some minor leaks in it. Um, waiting on a couple invoices, I believe up around $25,000 to preparing boilers above and beyond our budget. So we will be requesting a transfer, um, so you gotta go post it on. Just basically make sure, the form didn't change, it'll be different a couple of years ago, so I had that on the form. So tell Chris about that and just make sure what the process was to allow that, just to make sure. Um, so I'm going to get those invoices, Steve will sign it and we'll send it to Chris and go to FinCom. Fifty dollars part of the process and we'll wait to see.
So do we pay those and maybe reimburse them or do we let the?
Yeah, so we'll, so Steve and I were talking about this, but we really shouldn't. We should be putting the requests in as they come in, um, but mostly we paid already because we have to talk about it. We tried to ask to absorb these costs, um, but now they're just getting $25,000 for us. I said the same thing to Chris, it doesn't seem like a lot within a budget, like hours would be a lot of money for Hulu. It's a pretty big number, um, so we have paid them. I'll pay the ones that I'm waiting for too, just I don't want to keep the vendor waiting for their payment. I don't know how long this process will take, so we'll pay them and then the transfer will be made. Um, and lastly, uh, quickly, we made some repairs to the fire alarm system at the high school, um, this past week. A panel that kind of makes sure everything worked went down. So, uh, myself, John and the fire department worked pretty quickly to get the company. They were here doing their normal inspection of the fire alarm system. Some things were, uh, broken, needed repair, so it was really only offline for a day or so. Um, and it's fully repaired, they were out here today expecting it, so the fire alarm system at the high school is good to go, so. Again, though, another cost that's not in our budget that will be, um, pretty significant, so we'll talk about that. We may, might be making another transfer, if we can absorb it, we'll, we'll see once that bill comes in, um, settle over there.
So maintenance of the building has traditionally been absorbed by us, like is that like proper?
So I want to be clear, regular day-to-day yearly maintenance, yes, we build it into the budget. The $25,000 or so cost for the boilers are repairs that we made above and beyond, like boilers are down and we need to make repairs to get them functioning again. Couple of weeks ago, we had a leak, they had to come in and come get committed well with the leak. Then they got to come in and re-inspect the boiler to make sure it's working properly, like all these costs add up, so. I don't want to say maintenance, I want to say repairs, so maybe it's built into.
That makes sense.
Um, the budget repairs to an extent.
Unanticipated costs for repairs.
Unanticipated costs, and again, we had this conversation with Chris at one of those meetings. We've always done our best to absorb those costs because we thought we were acting appropriately. Chris pretty much said, you need to bring those to our attention because we don't know if you guys aren't bringing them to our attention. So, um, we'll do a better job of, of doing that, um, so we decided we'll, we'll put the transfer request through, Chris is aware of it. So, yeah, they're not, they're not maintenance, it's repairs above and beyond, what's, what's our approach?
Okay.
Unanticipated.
Un, yeah, unanticipated.
Repairs.
And I think we learned this through the budget processes here, um, with Chris and Glenn and FinCom and saying, you know, I think our past practice or the cycle that we've gotten into is our budget got approved. We want to stay away from asking for more even when it is unanticipated, if we can figure out a way to absorb it. And I think what I'm recognizing is that potentially hinders us in the next year's budget when something might come up that came up the year prior that we dealt with, that no one knows about except for us. So, you know, we might go to the town and say, listen, we found this savings because this person had to be out for some time, but we want you to be aware that we had to go above and beyond the cost that we had set aside for maintaining this piece. Um, at least it engages everyone in the conversation.
I feel like it helps open the lines of communication too. Then the budget process is not just the twelve weeks or so when we're building it. It's every time there's something that's an adjustment, I think it helps put all the pieces together for everybody. You know, we, we talk about these repairs to the building, uh, repairs, right? Yeah, unanticipated things that we've had to do that essentially seem almost hidden because no one knows about them. And we've been able to absorb them by moving our stuff around.
But I think it's important too that it's being brought out and having that conversation because there are things that are happening because of the building and, you know what I mean? In general, that it should also be noted, noted that there are things that are being repaired.
And that's what Chris was saying, is we're shooting ourselves in the foot without even realizing it. Because then when our costs go up the next year, when we're doing that, we're like, well, you know, why? But now it's going to be, you, it's like creating the paper trail almost. Every, everything becomes itemized and delineated and I's dotted and T's crossed. So that it alleviates any kind of those questions. And so I appreciate Chris saying that to us at that, you know.
I agree, yes.
You know, now we'll just bring it forward, you know, I mean, that's, I think, like you said, it, we've been trying to be what we thought was physically responsible, but actually it was, and it was backhandedly hurting us because it, we, exploration becomes, you know, we were, we thought we were doing a good thing and we, we covered this and recovered that. And so things that they think on paper, we were kind of building up a nest egg, we weren't, we were spinning down, but we have no conversations.
And we were sacrificing something else potentially to do this, to stay off the town floor. So, yeah, I think this practice coupled with the facilities needs assessment that we've talked about, so we have that back. And then again, just trying to put it all out there, out there, and I, I don't think it's a mystery to anyone.
We've been talking about it here, it's not like we're hiding anything, it's just getting all of the right people, all of the stakeholders on the same page. And I think that that is only going to help us, you know, so we can validate the conversations that we have at a bigger level when, you know, those costs are out there for everybody to, to see, you know.
Agreed.
Certainly, a lot of good relationships, these two vendors that are helping to repair our boilers. They've said, you know, in the past, but more often than shared, you know, it's only a matter of time before these boilers just fail. So, you know, we're going to do preventative maintenance, keeping the town aware that, you know, we need a fix to the, the boilers aren't unanticipated costs anymore.
Now, that's been an oral conversation, has there been any sort of write-up that they can do that kind of states that, that we can submit anywhere?
I don't think, to be honest, actually, I think.
Because when you say that and we think about like.
It was a couple of years ago in one of our capital requests when we were going to put boilers through, um, don't hold me to this. I don't know if it was FinCom or Chris or someone in town asked a similar question and the vendor said, well, we're not going to put our, we're not going to put that in writing to you, but based on our expertise, like, you know, we could verbally say, you know.
I mean, they, they're, it's a hell of a life expectancy, right? I mean, they're sixty-something.
Yeah. And again, this is nothing new, like we've had this conversation, there, it's only a matter of time before they, they fail. Um, and again, we've been doing our best to piece them together and so it's just a conversation that needs to continue. We, we need to make some changes soon, so.
Sometimes I get over the conversation piece and like, when are we going to go to the action piece? Like, that's why, you know, I feel like you can keep having a conversation until you're blue in the face, but ultimately like a decision needs to be made too. Because when you're watching some of these other meetings that are happening too, you know, there's that discussion of, well, why are we going to spend money on that if we could potentially have it revert, we reimbursed or partially reimbursed? If we're going to go through MSBA and then it becomes this vicious cycle, are we doing it, aren't we doing it? Let's go, and it's, at the same time, we need to stop having the conversation and make a move too, you know? And I think that conversation needs to, I know it has been happening, but like.
One of the things though is that I have to keep reminding myself is regardless, if we voted today as a town to accept the MSBA, um, mythical, um, approval. We're still five to seven years away.
Exactly.
So we still, I mean, we, there's going to have to be a decision made at some point, like.
Hopefully before it fails, you know what I mean, like.
Abreting new building, there are still things that are going to have to be done between now and then.
Correct.
To have a safe place to educate the kids. So that's, you know, I, I, I just don't know.
Using this opportunity to bring that up as well, that's all.
Well, I mean, it's not even bringing it up, it's just part of the, the conversation, it's, you know, the facility, the high school facility is, I mean, it's, it feels pressing to me and I don't, I do feel a little bit hogtied about it because we, you know, it's bigger than what we can accommodate in our budget and we have other capital expenditures that we need to bring forward and take care of, but I, I don't know, I just don't know how we're supposed to.
Like, it's a necessity and a priority.
Yeah.
Right, but then also like relay the urgency too, you know what I mean, of some of this.
We've been having these conversations for as long as I've been here, but I can say at least over the last few months, those conversations have been more poignant and productive than they have been.
That's good to hear.
We were, we are getting to a place where we can make a decision or put a plan in place, but again, it's not going to happen overnight.
I know.
Well aware of that, um, but I do feel like the conversations have been more productive over the last few months than they probably ever have been in the last three or four years.
That's good to hear.
So this is just a clarification question for my own, my own benefit. If we're up against a situation where the boilers fail, um, I mean, it would be great if it happens in warmer weather, but is that, if it's something that the boilers fail, can there be no school because it's like no hot water? Like, we're not using the kitchen, so what is, and do we have to, do we have to start brainstorming for a plan B in case it happens?
A plan of emergency almost?
Yeah, like what, what is our plan B? What is, what is our contingency plan?
Maybe that should be like part of a joint meeting discussion too though, actually, what, I mean, right?
I, I don't know.
It's a fair question.
You know, is that, is that a joint meeting question? Is that like the, you know, I, I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm not sure what the exact protocol would be, but at some point we have to have a contingency plan, don't you think, or not?
Well, yes, yes, you would, um, but yeah, if you can, or school for, you know, you know, papers, you know, the leagues that you're not working for. You couldn't go to school for a certain amount of time or.
Right, we have to make it up, but if there's no, if there's no boilers, then that's, you know, just taking our cameras for instance, you know, supply chain is, we're eight months, we can't go to high school for eight months.
No, but the, the, the boiler, so if something like that happened, the boilers would have to be replaced or repaired depending on what issue would be.
Okay.
And it's, it's, Adam was talking about, it's a good conversation to start having. If you don't know that could happen, you have planned for it, it could happen. And reality is now we notice a lot of companies with getting certain equipment, certain supplies that's taking longer to do things. So that, that could be, you know, could be a conversation to start having with, you know, certain contractors and things like that. And he would pre-lead us and it gets difficult because it comes into a public base thing and stuff like that. But it would be helpful to know, like, all right, so if something did happen, these type, this type of equipment is available to you. If it didn't happen, we could have something replaced or repaired, I mean. And I'm saying, you, you don't know, could be a year, could be ten years.
Right, and I, I just feel like regardless of it, like this is one of the things that we've talked about before is I feel like regardless of how new the building is or how old the building is, one of the things I don't think we've had is contingency plans. We don't have, like, what is our backup plan for, for anything?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we could have another snow cobra where people need to come into the building or, you know, Granby shut down again for eight days or whatever it was, you know, but we, we need to have some of those plans in place. So it's something, I don't know if it's, we put it on as an agenda or if it's a potential subcommittee or something, but.
Does the town have a plan like that, an emergency?
For, for us, it would, well, we're the, the high school, the emergency shelter. It's the FEMA recognized emergency shelter and people did live in the school when, uh, people were out of power in Granby.
It's a fair question, so let, let me, let us do, I think, I think we created that facilities needs assessment management document and I think this is something that could be incorporated in that, so let us.
And the boilers are on that.
Yeah, so let us, let us show you, I'm, I'm sure we have a plan or something, or the town might have a plan, like I don't need to recreate anything.
I don't want to recreate anything, but I'd like to know. And then for me, I'd like to sort of take it further because we are the school committee, like if the building is shut down for beyond X number of days. Like South Halle, when they had the mold situation, they were kind of scrambling because they didn't have a backup plan. They didn't know what they were going to do for classes. So I would like to see, you know, let's start putting some legitimate structure around that because it doesn't have to be the boilers, it could be, it could be a building fire, it could be any number of things. I would like to know what, so that the kids that are being educated, they're not going to be hindered, you know? I, I can imagine that there will be a pause, certainly, like that makes sense, but I don't want it to be, oh, this happens and then the next day we start to make the, I think we should have, we should have some of those like emergency preparedness type things. You know, like we know if we're going to do flashing trailers, we're going to know who the vendor is, we're going to know what the cost is, we're going to know how long before they can get here, like, you know, where's curriculum stored, is there stuff on the cloud? But, you know, that's, um, you know, it kind of is business-y sounding, but that's what I have to do. We have to reevaluate it every year, we have to look at it and might, you know, change contacts, you know, who, who is your, who is your person? Is there an accurate cell phone number? Just, you know, I think it'd be a good idea for us to kind of flesh some of that out.
We have some of it in our emergency, for our emergency operations plan that we're updating. So, um, not a section for long-term, I don't believe, but certainly something that we can add.
Because I don't think more repair is going to be what we need for short-term.
Nope, nope.
You know, so if that's something that we know is bubbling and I'm not saying that we're expecting it to shut down tomorrow or anything.
Right, yeah, we're not, yeah.
We just did a bunch of repairs.
To your point, it's a conversation we should be having.
I just want to be proactive rather than reactive.
Yeah, it feels like it would be a nice position for us to be in, you know, um, to be, like you say, proactive, kind of have some of our ducks in the row, so we're not scrambling, so then it doesn't feel as intense if something happens. Anything else?
Sorry, that went way off.
No, it's good.
I'm sorry.
I mean, we're learning, we had the, we had the lightning strike and we joke about it and everything, but we never would have. I mean, we're learning, we had that, we had the lightning strike and we joke about it and everything, but we never would have expected, you know, of course, I understand we're in a pandemic. But they're saying supply chain issues could be another six to, six to eighteen months, depending upon what event that you're looking at, right? So, and they're having trouble getting people to work and all of this, so I feel like it's, you know, kind of need to fill in the gaps for that. You just had a meeting, so I imagine that you probably didn't have another one, but maybe you do. Alright, anything else? I think we just, we pushed a couple of things for first meeting in June. Do we have anything from this meeting for the next agenda?
The substitute rates, is that next one?
No, he said we pushed that.
That's also June, okay.
I'll work with Jackie if it needs to go on there, but I think it's.
Okay.
Policy J, or sorry, Policy A and ACB.
And then we want to make sure regionalization stays on there. Okay, with that, we can, are we good?
Our next meeting is.
We're gonna vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Part 83. To discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining. As said, an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session.
Hi. Hi.
Hi. Thanks, everybody.